For the Buckingham Plan and Commission, this is March 18th. And please stand as Commissioner Doria will lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Schumacher will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Lord, we just thank you so much for all you do for us. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you for letting us be here tonight that we could help make decisions for this Plan and Commission. Be with us, guide and direct us, and maybe give us safe passage home. We ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Settle form, we have seven of eight. And that brings us to adoption of agenda. Nikki, any changes in the?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, agenda approved. Discussion topics, that brings us to our Councilor Henson Plan. But prior before that, let me, we have a new Plan and Commissioner, Kevin Bagro. Kevin, I'll give you the fold for a minute or two if you have anything you'd like to say.
I don't have it.
Yeah, nothing. That's fine. All right, Todd, it's, the floor is yours in the meeting.
So what I want to do tonight is go over the changes to draft sections three and four from last month's meeting. And then I want the, I was, I kind of, and then Tyler's going to go over the changes to the survey summary results report. And I kind of envisioned the rest of the meeting, depending on how we're doing with time being interactive, you'll notice I got a land use map from the previous plan up over here. And what I'm wanting to do is get some feedback from the group on how we want to amend this map for the upcoming plan, but we'll get to that in a little bit. So for draft section three, you should have it in front of you. You will notice that the changes we had made previously are still highlighted in red. We haven't actually accepted those changes yet, but we will do that at some point. This, remember, this is just a draft, so just keep that in mind. But I wanted to bring your attention in draft section three to page 52, the map of historic sites in Buckingham County. We did add Carter G. Woodson Birthplace Historical Marker to that map. And it's number 22 on the map. And then on page 67, the map with rock mineral types, I've changed the legend to make that more readable. Hopefully that meets with everyone's satisfaction.
Sixty-seven.
Yeah. It's map 16.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Get too far down the road, can we make a couple of, can we make a couple of comments with regard to pages earlier than that? Are you interested in?
Go ahead.
Page 40, when we get back there, there's some, there's a strikeout.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't quite understand why that's stricken out. Is there, was there an, was there a problem with that information?
I'd have to go back and check my notes, but my rec, you're talking about with the sewer?
Yes.
My recollection is we were actually asked by the group to take that stricken language out.
You referred to Yogaville?
Yes.
Yes, they did, yes, that Pete, I do recall.
All right. And then if you'll take a look at page 50, and I'm looking at the dark sky under James River, the penultimate sentence, that's the one before the last one. I think there's, and I'm just house cleaning here, I think there's a, there's a typo in there. I think you've got retor, was that supposed to be restore?
Okay, hold on, let me find it. Yes, that, that is a typo.
Okay, all right, so we'll take care of those two.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
And in pa, on page 51, or under Spooky Hollow Drive, there's a V at the end of the statement.
Ah.
I don't know what that is.
That needs to be removed. That's a typo.
That one's a typo as well.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And then the next page, 52, is the historic sites map, which I mentioned. And then jumping ahead to the rock mineral types, map 16, I just basically changed the legend, tried to make it bigger so you could read it. And the last four or five pages of this section, the Wildland Urban Interface Risk Index, all I did there was plot the location of the fire stations in the county. That's maps 18, 18A, 18B, 18C, and 18, actually, on that last page should be 18D. That's a typo, we need to correct that. So that's what I have for the, for the changes. Does anybody see anything else, or see anything, any issues of what we change, or see anything else that we need to address in section three?
I have page 63, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Page 63, you indicate that there are 79,000-plus farmland. What I thought would be extremely interesting was, what is the total landmass in Buckingham? What percentage is farmland? And, and is this the 79, the 79,000 acres, is that considered tillable? And if there, if that information is available, it seems to me it should be in, in the comp plan somewhere.
Okay, so what are you asking for? You're asking for total land?
Total acreage? Total landmass in Buckingham. I thought it was like 331,000, but I'm not sure.
So total acreage, and then what was the other one?
Well, what's the percentage of farmland, and is that tillable? And I'm asking that question because when you get on page 68, you say timberland consists of 321.3,000 acres, and I thought that was the land, close to the landmass in Buckingham. I might be wrong, might be, we might be around 363, but I'm, I can't remember, but I'm, I'm wondering whether or not.
All right. We'll, we'll look that up and we'll research that and get back to you next month.
Yeah, and I, I was wondering if you could put in some percentages so that we know basically the significance of those numbers, it would be helpful.
And when you say percentage, percentage of everything?
Well, the percentage of landmass, the percentage of farmland, tillow farmland to the total land, percentage of forestry to total land, I think it'd be interesting.
Todd, should just be able to add a extra column to both of your charts there and just put a percentages by the number of farms, not so much attitude, farm land, average size, harvested.
And then I, I'll jump down to page 64, it says, I'm not sure, you've got a, a statement in there about poultry. I, I'm wondering whether or not that's still correct, given the fact that we've, we've, we've undergone in Buckingham a pretty significant change in that area. And I wonder if there should be a footnote, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure.
Are you talking about the note at the bottom of that table?
Yes, sir. I mean, we've, we've lost a considerable amount of poultry houses in Buckingham, and as a matter of fact, there's some other things going on. I understand that they're, they're probably going to try to put an egg, an egg laying business in some of those, and I understand there's turkey in some of those. I don't know what it is, but I, I don't think the poultry is as significant as what you show on that, on that legend any longer. You might want to take a look at that.
That, that, I have some information on that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
All the farmers got together and they just started Central Virginia Poultry. They got a two-point-some-million-dollar grant to do it, so hopefully all the houses that want to be back up and running will be. A lot of the guys are 70 years old now and they just say they're done, but.
Form a co-op, correct?
We can actually mention that here in this, in the narrative.
Yes.
It says that table is from the USDA Census of Agriculture. It looks to be every five years. Do you know when their 2023 census would be available?
I do not.
Okay. If it's before our comp plan is finalized?
We can add it.
Look to replace some of that information.
Yeah.
And my last comment on page 68, map 17, it's just a question, there's no high-ranking reclamation. I'm curious to find out, is, is that accurate?
I mean, that's the data that we got from Virginia Energy.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're, I mean, I, I, I'm not really sure how to, I mean, I'm counting on them to provide that, that data.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm basically just mapping it for you.
I'm just wondering, because I understand that there's some, I don't know what they consider to be high-ranking, but it seems to me that there was some fairly significant conversation going on about reclamation in some of these mines, and it would just seem to me to be more than just moderate or low. Maybe Mr. Davis knows, I don't know.
What's that?
With regard to the reclamation in the mining, we show no high-ranking reclamation going on. That was a little bit confusing to me, because I understand there was some, but I don't know for sure.
Actually, it looks like there are a couple of high-ranked ones on this map that's in yellow. Maybe I just didn't see it clearly, I don't know. Let me take a look.
There's two in the New Kenton area, and then one up on, off of 15.
Now, right now, yeah, right below 15 and 60, there's, there's quite a few mines that are bunched together.
Yeah.
I could try and make those dots smaller to make that a little more readable.
Either that, or some kind of a note that would, that would point out that we have at least two high-ranking reclamation projects. And I think that's all I had in that particular section.
Any other Commissioners have anything that, at this point in this section?
If nothing else, I'll jump to section four, and we did have a few changes here. So I got in contact with my folks at VDOT and, or my contacts at VDOT, and they did provide me with additional shapefile data, and they, so we, we remapped everything. You'll notice on, and I've renumbered the pages too. So page 79, the roadway classification, you'll notice 15 down at the bottom, and 60 over on the right end have been included in the roadway classification map. Then pages 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, we redid all those maps with new data provided to us from VDOT. So take a look at that. I'll give you some minutes to take a look at that, because that's quite a few maps to look over.
Those numbers have changed essentially, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah, that's good. Mr. Chairman, but I do have a question with regard to pages 88 and 89, with regard to the ratios.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Again, on the map, they're just very difficult for me to, to read them. I, I think, I think that it's pretty, it's pretty good data. I really do think it's good data. Questions I would ask you, with regard to those traffic ratios, I guess it's traffic capacity, is there an ideal rate? Is there some sort of a state recommended rate?
Yeah, if you look on page 83, anything less than 0.85 is an, is an adequate traffic flow. As it gets closer to one, you, you start to have some issues, and anything higher than one is unstable.
I guess that answered most, and I guess, should there be, should there be something described? Would, would it be, at least for the main arteries, would it be helpful to have a chart that shows what our ratios are compared to what the recommendation is for the state or for those same kind of arteries elsewhere? I mean, I don't know if, I guess the question for me is, if our roads are that bad and nobody wants to come here, that's an issue. If, on the other hand, our roads are better and we're still not getting business here, that's an issue. So what am I comparing it to? Does that make sense, Mr. Chairman?
I think it's a viable question.
So what's the group's pleasure on that? Are you just asking for a legend to be put on these maps?
That'd be helpful. I mean, that's my view. I'm only one.
Todd, you could do, just for suggestion, you know, we did the quarters on the others.
Mm-hmm.
You might take the county and do the same thing for this.
Okay.
Might be simpler on these maps that are, especially with the data sort of congregated, is do the quarter like you did before.
Okay.
Might help you, and then do the legend. Because the legend is, does, is very beneficial, sort of helps a lot. But any of these congested maps, just because of the way they are, maybe you could do that. I know it adds a few more pages, but might clarify a lot.
May want to do the same thing for pages 84 and 85. I'll make a note to change those. And the only other change that I've got to present to you is page 94, the, the zoom-in map for the bike routes in and around Buckingham County. I did add the legend for the bike routes that hopefully is readable.
So this map is just a piece of the map on, on page 93.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's correct, yes. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the group and see what ques, other questions or comments you have on draft section four.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Are we tabulating this traffic data? Are we tabulating into buggy traffic too now? We have a lot of Amish on our roads now. Is that being figured into the?
I would assume.
I do not know the answer. I'll have to ask VDOT if that, if that, if those numbers include buggy traffic.
I would assume the accident would be if a.
There's several accidents with the buggies over the past few years, and yesterday, me and the deal, me and the wife, I deal with, came to Dillon to eat lunch after church, and we met just as many buggies as we did cars.
Yeah.
Okay.
Coming out of church. I would assume the accident report would reflect that, but I'm not sure about the traffic report.
Yeah, the traffic council, I'd have, I'll have to ask VDOT if that, if that's the case. And if not, I'll see if they have an idea where we can get that.
I mean, the Amish are steady buying and coming in, and you take it projected by 2045, well, to me, they need to be tabulating into the road data too.
All right, we'll see if we can get on that for you. Anything else?
Any other Commissioners? I think that's it, Todd.
So at this point, hey, Tyler, you still online?
Yep, I'm still here.
Okay, so we've gone through sections three and four. Are you ready to go over the, your changes to the survey results?
Sure, yeah, there aren't very many changes at all.
Okay. Go ahead and take it away, Tyler.
Okay. All right. So the first change is on page six of the report. At the bottom of the, the text, I added in a note about the, the margin of error, just kind of based on the conversation that we had at the end of the meeting, to provide some context for interpreting the data.
Page six, the last paragraph.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. The left-hand side access to that, is that people, is that number of people?
Where are you, Mr. Cap?
On figure.
Page six. Are you on figure one?
Yeah, figure one.
Oh, you're talking about the 0, 10, 20, 30, 40?
Yes, sir.
That's actually give, that's for reference. So for instance, James River is a little more than 90 when, when in the District of Representation. That's just giving you, telling you, giving you a, a frame of reference to determine how many people responded from each district.
So that, that left-hand axis is number of people?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Yeah, there, on all of these, you might want to go back and at least define what the axes are, because I, I'm a little confused on some of them. This is pretty clear to me, but there are other graphs in this survey, I think, that are pretty good. I just, I'm curious to find out some of those, what reference those accesses are.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Yep, so add in a con, description of what the axes are to the graph.
Be good, thank you.
Okay. And then, next change is on page 13, on table three. I tried to add a note in at the bottom to help interpreting the numbers. And similar changes on tables eight and nine on page 20. And then those were, those were the changes that I've made. Yeah, I can go back and add in a descriptor for the, the axes on, on the, the graph where it could be a little.
Confusing.
It could provide, help provide a little bit more clarity.
That, excuse me, that would be on all the graphs, correct? Would you go through and do that?
Right, all the, all the, the bar graph I'm looking at right now.
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Okay, so that's, that's it from, from my, for the survey report at least.
Okay. Does Commissioners have anything, questions in this section, concerns?
I just, one question, Mr. Chairman. Why are we doing the scale like one is one to eight on table eight? And eight is being the lowest priority, but then you come down to the next one, five indicates a very important priority? I mean, why are we changing the scale? Couldn't all of them be, one being low, the higher number being high? I mean, I just, it's kind of confusing.
Yeah, so, so for that, there were actually two different types of questions. For the, for the county priorities for improving quality of life, that was asking participants to rank these in order, these eight specific categories. So everyone, you know, ranked ordered it with each one getting one ranking. Whereas in table nine, that question asked them to give a one to five score for each of those questions separately, and then the score on the side is the average score. So it's a little bit different when it's an average score versus an average rank, and it's just based on how the questions were asked.
So, so what we did there with table nine, we actually asked, correct me if I'm wrong, Tyler, to, to rank very important, somewhat important, important, somewhat unimportant or not important at all, whereas with the table eight, we had those eight issues, and we wanted them all ranked from one to eight. So that's why they're done differently.
Any other comments from any of the Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to refer to figure 15 on page 25. Can you just explain what that, that upper chart means? I, I don't see, I, I guess I don't understand the descriptors. Can you go ahead and explain that chart?
Yeah, so the, the columns are the stack votes for the different types of growth in those areas. And the, the yellow space behind it is the amount of votes for no growth in those areas. So when you're looking at Dillon-Sprouts' Corner, the blue part of the column is for business and commercial growth, the orange or red part is for industrial growth, the gray is for residential growth, and the amount that goes up to that yellow area is the amount of votes for no growth. Whereas in Yogaville, you can see that the amount of votes for no growth was almost as much as there were any votes for any type of growth.
Okay, so let me, if you don't mind, let me, let me ask the question. First of all, what, those lines represent what? What, what is the X-axis?
Number of votes, yeah, the, I can add the, the numbers there and then add the descriptor there as well.
Okay, so that would be the number of respondents, correct?
That, yes.
All right. So what you're saying is essentially, what you did is you used a line graph to describe the people that really wanted no growth instead of putting another bar on top of the other bars.
Right.
Okay, I understand. Then in February sixth, I'm sorry, in February, in figure 16, I'd be interested in understanding what the left-hand axis is. You go all the way up to 800, so what is that?
That's the total number of votes for business and commercial growth across all the different areas. If you were to add all the blue columns together.
Okay.
That would be the business and commercial column.
So it would include all the different kinds of commercial growth that were voted on by the 400 or 500 people that we interviewed, correct?
Well, it's the same data from this future growth and development, it's just combined into business and commercial rather than separated by area.
So the X-axis again, or the Y-axis again here is, is, is number of responds, or number of questions responded, because we didn't have, we didn't have 1,000 people responding to this, this survey.
Right, but, but people could vote for business or commercial growth in Dillon-Sprouts' Corner, New Kenton, Dillon-Alfa, Scottsville, so each person could technically give eight votes for business and commercial growth if they wanted business and. So each person could technically give eight votes for business and commercial growth if they wanted business and commercial growth in all the different areas.
Okay, so that represents the total number of like responses, that's what you're telling me?
Correct.
That would be the Y-axis?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe some information on that would help too.
Yep, yeah, I think that clarifying the axes is definitely something that would be helpful.
Okay, then on figure seventeen, the very first, the manufacturing bar, uh, has three different colors and then you jump down to green for the rest. I get, can you explain that one for me?
Yeah, the different colors, uh, for the manufacturing was just to represent the different types of manufacturing options we gave. Um, and then the green was just to, I guess each one could get its own color. Um, but I, I just left the rest of them the same color since they were all only one type of, uh, bar.
So manufacturing, you broke down into three different categories and the rest had their own category.
Manufacturing, yep, was, we had three options of different types of manufacturing in the survey.
I understand, okay. Okay, that's understandable. And in figure eighteen, I'm assuming the same with regard to the X-axis, the same situation holds true as I think it was figure, figure seventeen or, no, figure, figure sixteen. So that's just the grand total number of kinds of questions that we responded to, obviously don't, don't represent the number of people, correct?
Yes, I would have, I had to double check that one, um, but I believe that's true.
All right, well, a legend on that particular axis would help too.
Yep, yep, definitely.
That's it for me, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, on page three.
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 Okay.
The very first bullet says a total of four hundred and ninety-six citizens participated. Uh, I think that's a little misleading. I, I think that should probably say we received four hundred and ninety-six responses. Uh, because I, I can attest that I've seen on Facebook that one person said they responded at least twelve times. So I don't think that we had four hundred and ninety-six unique citizens because the survey didn't have a control so that each citizen could only take it one time. I don't have the pleasure of the rest of the committee, but I don't think that's a hundred percent accurate.
Catch that Tyler?
Yep, yeah, I think that's a great point.
Any other comments, concerns, yes, J.D.?
On table eleven, if you go over from economic use of natural resources, it says, uh, under sample comments, support exiting mining. I, I don't know if that's supposed to be existing mining. Happened to see that.
At table eleven?
Table eleven, page twenty-six.
Yeah, no, that should be existing, that's a typo.
How did you get that one?
That title, that's the second row on table eleven, page twenty-six. Um, economic use of natural resources under the sample comments should say support existing mining.
Oh, yep, okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
Okay, and, uh, any other concerns or comments from the commissioners?
So I'll bring it up for a discussion, maybe not with CRC right now, but given what I just said about there being no control with the survey and multiple people taking it multiple times. Uh, the statement in here that says, uh, on page six, right above the graph, the last in there that we just added about margin of error, it says, in other words, the survey results offer a statistically reliable reflection of the broader population's perspectives and characteristics. With four hundred and ninety-six responses, again, that could be not accurate, you know. I don't know if I feel comfortable saying that it's a reflection of what the greater population wants. You know, of the total sixteen thousand residents, even with four hundred and ninety-six, I don't know that that would be accurate, but especially given that it might be biased results if multiple people took it multiple times.
Page your title.
Page six.
I'm just about the last sentence.
Yeah, for right now, right.
Write that last sentence for right now.
Any suggestions, ask these who make that out?
That is my suggestion, yes.
Okay. How does the other commissioners feel about that? Everybody in agreement?
Yeah, I just don't feel like it's good, you know, what we have, uh, four hundred and ninety-six people out of seven thousand.
All right, well, we will.
Does that, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, does that sixteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-two, does that reflect the prison population too, Nikki?
Sixteen thousand ninety-two does, yes.
Because I know when we redistricted last year, well, we don't count the prison population in our redistricting anymore. Unless they were a resident of Buckingham when they got locked up, that's what we were told.
We'd have to rely on what the census is doing. Todd may be able to speak more to that or...
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have, uh, hey Tyler?
Yep.
The, the page six where you talk about the population, is that the twenty-twenty census or is that the most recent American community survey estimates?
Yeah, I should, uh, reference it, um, to be sure. I think it's the census, um, but yeah, I can go back and make sure and then reference it there.
So the question is whether that sixteen thousand nine eighty-two includes the prison population, is that what I'm hearing? Okay, Tyler, if we can confirm whether that sixteen thousand nine eighty-two includes the prison population, uh, just make, make a note of that for the next time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I got one other question.
Yes, sorry, go ahead.
Um, I'm looking at some of the numbers on these charts and, uh, I know we've got four hundred and ninety-four responses. And some of these charts show in total less than that or a different number. So I'm assuming that some, the, the numbers that you've tallied here may include, may include surveys that either skipped a response. In other words, why wouldn't, as an example on figure twenty, uh, why would those total numbers be less than the four ninety-four?
What page are you on?
Page number thirty. Figure twenty. I think I'm adding it right, that's, uh, two thirty-four, three oh four, three eighty-four? I'm sorry, four eighty-four versus the four ninety-four. So I, I guess what I'm saying is I'm not, I wouldn't be overly concerned if you said, well, look, there just weren't that many responses or people just skipped over them. But then the big question would be, why would they be in, why would they not be included in no opinion? Seems like the numbers should tie out.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong Tyler, but unsure no opinion was actually an option, and so it's entirely possible what happened there is people just didn't answer the question.
Just didn't answer the question, okay.
We don't want to assume, we don't want to assume that if they're not answering that it means they're unsure or have no opinion.
Okay.
Correct, yep.
So that would just represent the people that didn't answer any of those questions? Okay.
Ask that, do we make clear what your change you would like? On the, uh, page six. We're gonna look into the population, make sure the prison's not in there, but.
Right.
You also wanted to, uh, I think it was consensus of the commission to remove that last sentence.
Right, the last sentence of that final paragraph.
Okay, you got that Todd, didn't you?
Yeah, we did, yes, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure before we moved on. Any other comments or concerns?
So, so one comment, um, for the, for that comment at least is that, um, statistically reliable is a little bit different than statistically valid. And what this is saying is just that if we were to do the survey over again and take another random sample of four hundred plus citizens from Buckingham, we could be ninety-five percent sure that the value we would get would be within four percent of the value that we got in this survey. Um, but that's not necessarily saying that that value is within four percent of the true value of the population, um, which is a, a little bit different. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Was there, is there something that you do to determine the statistical significance of the entire study? I mean, if you're looking at five hundred out of roughly, what, fourteen thousand excluding the prison population, does that, I mean, is that a, is that a statistically significant number?
Oh, yeah, yeah. To have a ninety-five percent confidence interval with the margin of error is this low, is only possible to, with a sample size that is this high. Typically, surveys work with around a hundred to two hundred people. Um, and that's, you know, making generalizations to a much larger population.
So you can safely say that the sample that we've got here pretty much, uh, would represent the county?
Right, ninety-five percent confidence interval means that we, basically, there's a five percent chance that this is a, you know, a statistical anomaly, but we're ninety-five percent sure.
Thank you.
Did CRC keep a record of how many unique logins or devices completed the survey?
That I don't know, uh, as far as, I'd have to get, I think it was, uh, it was Lauren who set the survey up, so, uh, she's actually not here tonight. I can actually ask her if she tracks that.
A word about that the young people are not responding to this, that over half of your respondents were over fifty years old.
All right, so if we have no other comments or concerns, uh, then we have our changes or edits.
So what, what I envision next, I got the map over here and I'm thinking we could maybe put it here in front of the dais. And if the group wants to, to walk down, we can, uh, take a look at this map and, and kind of, and give me some feedback on how you want to change it or if you want to change it at all. This is the future land use map from the previous comp plan. Uh, so, that's, that's, the group's agreeable to that. Or I can just put it down in front of the dais right here and move the podium back and let you, let you all look at it from your seat.
It's probably simple just for everybody to come down and view it, I guess. Only gets seven of us.
But I kind of envisioned the rest of the meeting going like. No, this rolls, well, maybe not. What we did last time with the future land use, these are just corridors up Route twenty and then down. Us at the time of plan. Our house village growth area, uh, out here, that's Route sixteen. Have the Yogaville growth area, probably should have brought, um... Barter shed overlay, Route twenty. That's your Dylan Sprouse. Up a high growth area. Now, what we did here, uh, we, we tried to use boundary, uh, in a, sorry, Arbonia New Canton. Tried to do here, we tried to use roads or railroads boundaries or in some cases. Parcels, because we wanted to have. Right here, uh, the last time we did the comp plan, uh... So, take a look at that, I've got a couple of sharpies here, if you want to mark this up.
So just a question. What, what happened here to keep that green?
Uh, nope, they, they didn't, the group...
That's exactly the argument we had a while ago. There, if you recall, isn't that Mrs. Moore's area in there? That, over here? So, but it's part of this green. Yeah, so I mean, if you want that to be a growth area, we gotta...
Yeah, hers was this side of fifteen, so...
I understand it was that side of fifteen, but it was in that, I mean, there's no, there's nothing on this side of fifteen and that's what the argument was.
I'm on that side of fifteen, we don't want nothing.
Where were you when we were arguing about Mr. Moore, Mrs. Moore, you know? I mean, that, that's, that was, that became one heck of an argument. And it was all over the fact that somebody said, well, you know, this is really a good area to grow. I don't know that well as you do, I mean, so you tell me, why isn't it yellow? So that should be yellow on both sides. It's longer than that, it's been, this is from twenty fifteen, so it's been nine years.
Right there on that section of fifteen.
Right here? Right here?
Right beside fifteen.
Yeah, right beside fifteen.
See, that was...
It's a house every acre, all the way up through that.
Yeah, well, that was the argument that I was making when she was asking for a zoning change. And I said, "Well, what are you going to use the land for?" And it did affect the other people in that area. And the comment was, "Well, maybe, you know, that's really a growth area. We ought to really have that as growth area, so here's your opportunity. You tell me." As far as I'm... When I went out and investigated that area, there were a lot of... Lot of small houses in that area. So if those people don't want that changed, I mean, what does it do to the tax base, Mr. Davis?
It doesn't do anything to change it.
Well, but I mean, if you zoned it industrial, would they pay more taxes? So it wouldn't affect them?
Nothing. We went through this, but I had a... Many discuss it more than this.
All right.
It's just a... Nothing changes on our tax ticket. They're still there. Whatever they change it, it is busy. And that triggers the...
Well, this is all B1 or NC1, right? The yellow?
The yellow. I think the yellow was in... No, not NC was on.
Well, I understand that we had a mining operation up in that area. But, I mean, if you really want that to be a zoning... A growth corridor, if you really think that we can do growth in that area, then shouldn't we go ahead and get that zoned so we eliminate the arguments?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it makes sense for all... The growth in your county, when you rule, I guess, will come on the main corridors, because that's where the main...
But where do the utilities go? Where do the utilities go? How far down? Where do the utilities go? How far down do the utilities go? I mean, you're going to be... You're restricted by water and electricity, essentially.
You got electricity, but you don't have water in that area. All the water you got is just...
Well, water. So doesn't that... Doesn't that create a problem?
Not if you got enough water on site to supply it.
So that shouldn't be eliminated?
If you eliminate it to water, then we'll never have anything except for our deal.
So we shouldn't worry about water, but how about gas? Gas would be the same thing.
Natural gas?
No, I'm talking about any kind of gas. So if we have LP gas, it's... It wouldn't be a... If E can go natural or LP, right, so a gas line wouldn't matter up there.
The gas line goes to Bear... Crosses down there, right next to the river, goes to Bear Guard Power Station.
Almost from twenty straight.
Actually, I'll have it on this map.
Down next to Scottville.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So you've got natural gas at the power plant.
Well, in order to eliminate any future... I mean, if you really think that that ought to be a corridor for growth, maybe we ought to make it NC1 or B1.
You could do that, and we're just... Oh, we did designate. Already got Dollar... Was it Dollar General?
I forget exactly where it's... You got Dollar General on one side, and you have a Family Dollar and Dollar Tree on the other side. Right, right. Got a guy that wants to put a... Ball manufacturing...
Right there where the Dollar...
Exactly. He's right there with the Dollar General.
We've got Moss Christian. So it's common, but if you got the...
Does it make sense to do all NC1 up in that area, so we...
You can. We just have to look at it.
Want to extend out of fifteen, and so how far over?
Hey, just give them availability to change.
I mean, what it says to me, if I was looking at this thing, and I'm just looking at it for the first time, it says, "Well, we've got some growth possibilities up in that area." When I look at the green, I think to myself, "There's going to be a lot of issues if we're going to grow that area, because you're going to have to develop it." But if you imply that you've got some growth capability there... I know there are small houses there, maybe people don't want to sell. But if there was a possibility and they were up to selling it, then you're already set up to...
But this isn't...
Right. Yeah. Identifying where you want growth to occur. Helen been arguing about growth corridors along fifteen, so maybe... Not going to change anything.
No, doesn't change any of your... All it's doing is directing people towards that area. Fill that property or...
Anywhere you come in from fourteen... From fifteen, from here and up in here, I think those should be marked as growth. I don't understand why this isn't marked. I know that, that wouldn't be marked. A little bit further out this way, and sixty out here, I don't understand why that's not... Can only tell you, last time, that's what the planning commission identified. Why, honestly, I don't recall.
No problem to take all of your terrain there. Yeah, it does not change anything. Suppose anybody looking at that center growth. It's a natural development of your county anyways.
It gets... What it does is it provides an impetus for us to go out and ask for things for those corridors in order to... And if we've identified it, then we've got a reason to go out and try to get it developed.
If you want me to go back?
I've got an economic development committee, and I can identify these corridors. We ought to be looking for business. And available. I mean, it doesn't do any good for us to go talk to a company and say, "Well, yeah, but we're all farmers." What we want to do is we want to grow these corridors. I think.
That's a growth ring in a business.
Right.
Get the Dollar Generals and Baller.
I'd love to see a distribution center. Part of there, I mean, they could probably live on that. What's the commission's pleasure here? Do we want to have both corridors? So how far you want to come out from the highway? Some of them you're going to have problems, like if you go fifty-six out toward James over here. Going out that way, I think both ends of fifteen. This ends up being pretty mountains too, as I recall. Going out toward Amherst, is that right? Yeah, but how far out? I mean, when you start getting out here, you really... I don't know. What do you think? I mean, got a lot of water on that area.
What you're looking at is this...
There's a room that's not just a... Most of those people deliver down that end, go to Apple Macs.
Businesses go on any out business looking for them. Funny, I do recall while we had it...
I believe that at the time, they just... They wanted to restrict any growths basically just along the corridor itself. Not branch out too far from the...
And that's what I would still say.
I have to go back and look, but I want to say these are about a quarter... These are about a quarter mile either direction, yeah. Questioning the council, we want to... Come closer to... Then back up, and then right below Scottsville, right here.
Problem with coming off of right at Scottsville.
You do, you do. I think that was another reason they wanted to leave all this green.
No fights about others. It's going to be a lot of areas are not going to be quiet.
Can't put a building, because you're... You got a slope. That's what you have there.
Anyway, but it just gives you...
In the land use section, we can actually make a note of that with some narrative. Or being in floodplain. Right.
From the yellow home down, you could use...
I used to connect and bring it all the way down here. So how about... So fifty-six, too?
I'll put it on.
As Pete said with that case.
Right. Do have one question here, is I've got this watershed overlay coming up all the way to the highway right here on this side. Want to put in a growth corridor on both sides and just move the watershed overlay like a quarter mile? So it's... Yeah, this is Trobson Creek Road right here, and I forget exactly. I think that the water source is right here. Way off of twenty. You want to come in off sixty? Yeah, we'll come back, and we'll come back to this in the next. I got a question. I don't understand why that's... You even got businesses up there. You got a lot of mountains out here, too. I don't know what you... I mean, you can put it in there, but I don't think you're ever going to grow anything out there. You got...
It's not about how much business is making it better.
Right, I was just going to say... Like I said, we can actually make a note of that in the text for the land use section. So, question for the group, because this is part of the Dillon Alpha High Growth Area. So two questions here. Do I want to extend it? Instead of just making this whole corridor, do we want to put this high-growth corridor on both sides of fifteen? And what am I doing with this parcel here where we left it out? Is that high growth because of the utilities? Yeah, that's Dillon area. So this is... This is Dillon right here? Correct, that's Dillon. So do the utilities go out here? Then why not make it high growth? Christian School's right here, it's...
That way you're consistent all along.
Do I put this parcel back into the high-growth area? Sure. That's just the rough shape. It's not what it's going to look like when I put the... Alan, the property owner asked Danny if we could... Oh, you have that green hole there. Over here, isn't this all Davis? Here, isn't this all Davis back in here? Davis, doesn't he owns... I think he's kind of got a bunch of land in there, sixteen hundred acres? Up further? I'm just saying quarter mile each side of the highway, if the groups... Involved in that one? I'll tell you, when we start talking in that group, we need to talk. I guess... Guess the question becomes, do I want to... Color schemes on these? Corridors one color, natural growth areas another color.
Question Johnny, you may can tell me. Brown on our side of fifteen now, where is the industrial mine on our side of fifteen? No, 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 right there. You just put the last one you touched, right there.
Right there.
Lights on that side of fifteen, that's what... That's Bear Guard and Power Plant. Okay, it ain't a mine, it's a power plant. Excuse me a little bit, I was just... I was thinking, I done lived there for fifty-five years, where is the mine at? Industrial and mining, so that's the power plant with the mine.
I could make a note. I could make a note, um...
Actually working on budget Wednesday night. Six-year plan at five o'clock Wednesday night. Well, next week I got this Monday night, Crossroads Tuesday night. Is what it is.
I'm out of clear revision.
So would you like me to just bring a big version of the map again, where the change is made? Can I give you the rest of the land use section meeting?
Other than those.
Only up to you, anyway, we were... If we'd be... Brought, brought those to you, or just brought you the...
I don't wanna save any time. Well, I assume after...
Guys doing it section by section, so as soon as the change, I guess it's in each section.
All right, Nick, when you're ready. That closes out our discussion topic, and we'll move to commission matters and concerns. Everybody's, has had time, I know Calvin hadn't, because he's just coming on. We were gonna, we can postpone this till next, a, a regular meeting next week, where we can go ahead and look, uh, at possible changes that's necessary for the Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct. What's a, what's a pleasure of the commission? Does everybody feel comfortable now to go ahead and make, make suggestions and changes and vote on it? Or wait until next meeting? Nick, you look like...
I did receive a request from Commissioner Gooden that she'd like to be present for any action to be taken on.
Okay.
But I'm sure if you have discussion regarding that...
All right, well, I'm not opposed to doing that, but I'll have this for the pleasure of the commission here, what the majority wants. I will say that, uh, I did forget to announce that we'd already talked about, actually, I talked to Mr. Wright and Joyce about this. On the Code of Conduct, uh, number seven, that needs to be deleted. Be open-minded and patient, that's fine. But the problem is, we say, and staff's sufficient opportunity to present their views. Views, that goes against our bylaw three minutes, so we do, so we either, I think the best thing to do is just take that out. And then on, uh, the Code of Ethics, it's the same thing, it's repeated on number 10. Allow all citizens, employees, colleagues, or staff sufficient opportunity to present their views. I can see someone wanting more than their three minutes, so I don't want to, I think we, I think both of those probably just being wise thing is just deleted, so... Did want to make those, but, all right, do, uh, what's a pleasure of the commission? Do you want to postpone until next ma, uh, meeting next week? And we'll go over this at the end of the meeting? Or do you want to go ahead and make the changes? Joyce has asked to be there, um...
Well, did you make, Mr. Chairman, you're making a recommendation, take these two out based on your conversation with Mr. Wright?
Uh, yes, but I would, I don't think, if we're gonna vote on something, let's either do it all tonight or wait until next week, so, uh, Joyce is here. So it's really, really whatever the commission wants to do.
Up to you, sir.
Well, y'all are non-committal. I tell you what we'll do, she asked, and if nobody has heartburn, we'll just do it at the end of the, uh, a regular meeting next week then. Well, while, while, let me make, I did want to make one other suggestion, and I'll give y'all time to think on this, I'll give you a week. On the one that was number four on the Code of Ethics, seek to find and use most equitable, efficient, effective, and economic means for getting tasks accomplished. I interpret that, I read it about five times, and I interpret that as this. Because it says economical means, I can foresee a possible applicant thinking, well, they're trying to get, they may cut discussion on my application because they're trying to get the task done as quick as possible. So, I'm not saying that everyone would look at it that way, but that's sort of what I saw, so I'm, I'm coming from a dead angle that I think it's probably, doesn't need to be in here. I know, I, I see what they put it there for, but I, I can see a problem, a possible problem with somebody thinking, well, I'm getting short-changed a little bit because they're, they're trying to keep, uh, moving along, and, uh, I may not have got the due diligence that I should have had. So that's just my opinion, and I'm just throwing it out there, so...
Doesn't take the one.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
With, with respect to your comment, uh, my, my view of the whole thing was, I didn't even know what the whole sentence meant. But if there was an insistence on something, I would suggest to say that to the best of our ability, we'd use a process that allows a fair and effective response to those bringing projects and issues forward to the commission. But I don't know, I mean, we've said it a dozen times, so I don't even know that it needs saying.
Which, uh, which one was that, Pete?
That's number four in the Code of Ethics.
Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about.
So I said, if you need, if you need a statement, what you're, what you've said in other sentences, and throughout your ethics and your conduct, it's just to the best of our ability, a process that allows fair and effective response to those bringing projects and issues forward to the commission. My point is, I, I didn't understand the sentence the way it was written, I didn't even think it was needed.
Right, and, and I, that's what I said too, so you're, you're in agreement with me. All right, but anyway, we will decide on that, there's just food for thought. That's just the way I saw it, so... All right, uh, anybody in the commission say anything they want to voice? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Okay.
All on paper, raise your right hand. That was unanimous. We are adjourned, thank you. I appreciate everything.